We'll have a, first we determine a performance present, and there is one present. And we are going to have elections for officers, and the first officer to be elected will be the chair. Get a nomination for chair.
I nominate Lady Crabtree as chair.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Let's have some discussion.
Okay.
How many people are we missing?
Missing three.
That's nearly half the board. Our third, right?
Yeah. Three out of seven.
I like our chairman without half, you know, nearly half our board here.
Good point.
Well, the rules say you have a quorum, and I'm not in charge.
Well, I know we don't, we have a quorum, but that still, we've got three people here. One of them emailed said he would be here. That's just for discussion. When we're appointed to these boards, you know, we need to show up for them. I'm gonna get on my soapbox a little bit. I mean, I've missed a few meetings in the last 10 years as well, but normally I'm here. So, especially, some of it may, we're electing officers, if I show up late, I won't be an officer. Maybe. That's all I have to say. Your honor, Ray.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think he makes an excellent point, so...
He's the chairman, right?
He is.
Yeah, I'm not. I think he makes an excellent point.
If you want to appoint a member of the, uh, planning commission as the temporary chairman, you can do that as well too at this moment, and we can move this to the back and get to the end of the agenda, and then if you want to just postpone it until next meeting, that would be fine as well.
Let's wait till, let's put it to the end, and maybe some of these guys will show up.
Can I get a motion?
I guess I need to withdraw my motion then.
Then I'll withdraw my second.
And then, we'll just, you know, I move that we elect officers at the end of the meeting instead of beginning.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go, fairs. Can you get any nomination for our chairman, Pro Tim?
I'll nominate Lady Crabtree as chairman, Pro Tim.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries.
All right. Okay, we're not electing officers. So, then, we will proceed with the invocation. Brother Knowles, if you will, give us the invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Please stand. Dear Father, we come before you, praising your holy name, and thank you for all the blessings and life. We thank you particularly for this past holiday season and Thanksgiving season, for which we have so many things to be thankful for. Ask you now to bless us, board, be over our deliberations tonight, dear Father, and help us to make the decisions that are right for our, for our community. These things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under the Constitution, with liberty and justice for all.
Be seated, please. Okay, then, if we're not proceeding with the election of officers, let's move to review of the agenda first before we begin. Do we have any additions, corrections, or things? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the, the agenda as printed.
Move to accept.
Accept the agenda as printed. You just amended the agenda.
Oh, you amended the amended agenda to move the election of officers till the end. Yeah. I'll second, Ray. Second it. Okay, a motion and second to accept the amended commission agenda with the election of officers at the end. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Okay, the agenda is accepted now. Reading and approving of the minutes of the October 15th meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. I have a motion and second to approve the minutes as written in the packet. Supply? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? My hearing none. Minutes are approved as writ. Old business, we have none. Reports of officers and staff?
Yeah, I wanted to get one thing. There was a discrepancy, and so I wanted to make it clear on new business, on the Woodlands plat. I had a favorable recommendation, but that was under the assumption that there was a vested rights. That was, that was in play, but I was wrong, and so being that it's not the situation, then I'd have to change the recommendation to an unfavorable recommendation for the Woodlands.
So, in this packet where it has that, and this would be on page five, we have that the staff recommends number alternative one, vote to approve the request. That has to be stricken and, or changed to the staff recommends number two, alternative two, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Does everybody understand that? Okay, thank you very much. Now, moving on to new business. Do you have something else you want to say?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
If you'd like, he can share a copy of the text of the subdivision regulations that the plat is in conflict with, just so we have that information.
I have one. Any other reports on officers and staff?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Then we will proceed with new business, looking at subdivision plats. We will begin with public hearings. Understand, in the public hearing, the public is invited to respond to each one of the items as we bring them up. We will open the public hearing, allowing two minutes for each speaker. If you are here and you wish to speak to any one of these, to one of these as it comes up, please feel free to come to the podium, state your name, and slowly your address so we can record that, and then you'll have your two minutes to speak. If you are a second person wanting to delegate your minutes to the person who has already been speaking, come up, give your name and address slowly, and delegate your minutes to them, and they can then proceed on with speaking. Is anybody not clear about that right now as we start? Okay? Then we'll begin with the subdivision plat, the Woodland Hills Phase Two Major Subdivision Preliminary Plat, Ovoca Road, that is listed from pages four through, where am I to go? Nope, that's part of, no. Is it four through eight? Is that what it is?
Four through eight.
Four through 10?
Four through 10.
Four through 10?
Four through 10.
Okay. I saw the shape and thought it was the other one. Okay. Yes?
My name is Andy Best. Live at 273 Haynes Hollow Road in Winchester. I'm the land surveyor on this project. We had this in last month, seeking approval. There was some miscommunication, I believe, and it was denied. We're back again to try to get approval this way.
Thank you. Any other from the public to speak? Hearing no other from the public to speak. I didn't open the public meeting, did I? Okay. But we'll assume it was open when you came up to speak, Andy, and I'll close the public hearing at this time, and I'll entertain a motion on this request.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information presented to us this evening, with the subdivision connectivity that does not meet the requirements, I move to accept, to accept the recommendation from the, from the director and vote to deny the request.
I have a motion and second to select alternative two, vote to deny the request on the Woodlands Phase Two Preliminary Plat. Is there any discussion to be brought up? This is the term for...
Mr. Chairman, I don't understand. Mr. Knowles said to go along with the...
You were not here, I'm sorry. You're late. Mr. Comer, the, the, a planning director explained to us that he had labored under the, the understanding that there was a vested interest in this due to a preliminary plat that had been approved some time before. And, but that was not the case. That preliminary plat had run, the time limit had run out on him. So, he, with that preliminary plat not in, he can't recommend, based on the subdivision requirements currently, he cannot recommend. So, the staff recommends alternative two to deny the request.
Did you get one of these?
I did, but, uh, I'm, I don't get the connection.
That's the problem, there is no connection.
You have to have, on a subdivision, tell me if I'm wrong, you have to have two different ingress egress routes.
Well, I thought this was something that come before the commission denied. Is this something that's already in existence?
Yeah.
That was the regulation.
That was the regulation before we even had this discussion.
Okay, I didn't understand that. I thought when they handed to me, it was something that was being proposed tonight.
No, that's, that was approved back in the summer, in June. So, was the engineers and everything made aware of that because they presented a plat that was not to our standard? How is the, why did that happen, I guess is my question. I get, Andy, you're the one that, were you aware of this when they were doing that?
This law, this rule for, for double ingress egress is like, or has changed recently. I was about one month behind finding out about this rule. I personally do not agree with it. There are many, many subdivisions in this town and other adjoining towns that have one point of ingress and egress. It just, I feel that that makes a community more of a community instead of a cut through. And in this case, I feel that, that people are going to be avoiding that intersection, that wide intersection, by cutting through this subdivision at a high rate of speed. I feel that this new rule that's on the books should be a case by case thing, that you should look at the traffic patterns on roads instead of just saying, no, every subdivision has to have double ingress and egress.
See, I don't even think the guy from the state was aware of this. Was he, that came, talked to us in study session?
He may not have been. This is in the subdivision regulations. I don't know if you reviewed our specific regulations. I think part of the discussion that we had at the staff level was that, and I don't know the dates, I don't know if Lee has them with him, but some time ago, my understanding is that the area was under one owner and platted as one development, or the plat was approved as one development. And now it's coming to you in pieces, you know, Emerald Meadows came separately, the Woodlands is coming separately. And when it was originally approved as one plat, whatever year that was, the subdivision regulations at that time allowed for subdivisions to have one way in and out. And so that's what Lee was speaking to when he said vested rights, is there was a little confusion over whether they still had, if they were vested under the prior subdivision regulations, or if that had expired, which now we know that it did expire.
If it had stayed intact to the original plat, they could have one ingress egress, correct? They'd be vested.
Yeah, I mean, they would have been vested if it was one subdivision.
Right, but we split it into three now, well, there's three.
And so, my understanding is these new subdivision regulations with that requirement that's in front of you, that has been in effect since July 1 of this year.
Yeah, and I know that you're right, Andy. There are several, because Terra Estates and several of the ones down that same road are, are all single entrance and egress situations, so that is true. Let me ask you, is there anything about where you would have to put the second ingress egress point? Because the ruling says that you have to have it unless, unless it says if the subdivision is unable to have two ingress and egress connections due to either limited road frontage or topography, then the planning commission can approve it with a single entrance and egress. Is there anything that obstructs you from having a second entrance and egress point?
At this point, there is not, on this project, there is not limited road frontage, and the topography does not restrict that. But again, I disagree with that rule. And may I also say that I started this project a year ago. The design was put out a year ago. We've been working through with the development committee, trying to get all the little things ironed out, and now I get told right near the end that, hey, by the way, you can't do it like this. Now your engineer has to go back in and redesign everything.
I know, but you, you also told us two weeks ago that you talked to the developer about putting a entrance off of Riley Creek, correct?
I brought that up to.
Okay, so it wasn't like you told him that in the last two months, or, he knew that from the get-go?
I know. It was about two months ago that I actually told him, we met in Emerald Meadows, and we had that discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Was this, I might understand that this rule right here was voted on by this commission earlier in the summer.
June, and it went into effect in July, yes.
So, can, we have someone read from the minutes of that meeting what happened at that time?
Not here right now. We don't have those minutes right here, right now. I'm sure we have them on file, and they can be presented, but we can't do it right here, right now. Because we don't carry the stacks of meeting minutes from months past here.
I'm a little bit concerned about coming to this meeting and getting surprised like this when this was an agenda item. The background information was presented in that meeting announcement, but nothing about this, nor are those minutes available. And I don't feel, feel comfortable addressing this issue under those circumstances.
Well, this is, this is our second meeting where this is sort of surprise. I mean, you know, our third meeting, we didn't even know it in the...
I know.
Study session.
That bothers me. We've had two meetings on this already, and this was not brought to light, nor was it put into the announcement for this meeting, and we get it sprung upon us at the last minute at this meeting.
And as explained before, the, the, the main reason that happened was because we were laboring under a misconception that we had a investiture that we didn't actually have.
That's the first I've heard of that.
That's what was brought up at the very first part of it. You might not have yet been here when it was brought up to the fact that there was, there was originally a preliminary plat done, and it was approved, so...
My point is, is we're shooting at a moving target. Everything keeps changing, and it's very difficult to keep up with what's going on.
Well, I'm just trying to explain.
I understand.
Again, we had, we had a preliminary, and they thought it was, and it was believed that there was a vestiture in the property that, through that, and that way, this would not have applied to that property, because it would, he would have already been vested in it with his, with his plat. But that plat did not get acted upon within 24 months, which is the timeframe that had to be acted upon, so therefore that preliminary plat went void at that point.
What I'm saying is, we've had two meetings before this, and that's the first time that I've heard that this was contingent on a prior approval.
Because it was just discovered prior to this meeting. Up until this meeting, this was not known.
Some of our angst is, you know, myself along with Mr. Comer, is what other shoes will drop? We can only make decisions based on what information we've provided, and if we don't have adequate information, then sometimes we can't make any, you know, like I say, garbage in, garbage out. You know, if you don't have good data points coming in, your data points coming out are not going to be good. So, we need as much information as we can get coming in to make educated, well-informed decisions.
Which is why this was brought in tonight. It was just discovered now, so it was brought in to make sure we knew about it and didn't make a mistake now.
In our next meeting, what, what else is out there that we don't know about is what is my only concern. I mean, if we'd have known, some of our discussion that we had two weeks ago at a regular meeting would have been moot if we'd have known about this, correct? You know, we were discussing where the, where the egress ingress point was, oh, you know, why was it here? Why wasn't it over there? Maybe if we had two, it wouldn't be as big a deal. So, now we're, we have rules that they have had too. Is it a certain number of houses?
No.
No, just all subdivision.
And I will say, from the staff perspective, I can really only speak going forward, but in our staff reports and in our recommendations for approval, the reason that Lee brought this up tonight is because we can only recommend for approval what is in compliance with the subdivision regulations and zoning ordinance in front of us. And it was discovered that this wasn't in compliance, and we have an obligation to tell you when there's a conflict between what's been presented and what's in the subdivision regulation.
They were about...
Now, the planning commission is solely authorized to approve those subdivision regulations, and so if there's discussion about wanting to change that or relook at it, study it, then we would take that feedback into consideration. But, you know, just as a whole, I do think this is a conflict that the planning commission will need to deal with. It's not only going to affect this subdivision.
But others. But really, if we voted to approve this, we would be voting against our regulations, correct?
Can they come back, though, with the change to have two ingresses and egresses at this point? Like, can they resubmit?
At this point, my understanding of where we're at in terms of the application and the timing, is it a new 60 days, or are we still working from the original 60 days?
They reapplied, so they have, we have a full 60 days, don't we, Lee?
It's a new application.
Yeah.
So, we could push it to the next meeting and ask for it to be changed, right?
But you could also do some other things. There's, there's, of course, we can vote to postpone any decision on it until the next meeting. We could also, if somebody so desired, you could vote to approve it with a requirement to put in the two entrance and egress. You can require them to do that, because it's in your subdivision requirements. So, you could create an approval for it.
Contingent of...
Contingent upon them putting in a second entrance and egress.
Does that settle weird precedents for them in terms of the planning, like, the way they, I don't know? Like, does that settle weird precedents to do that, or no?
Not really.
Okay.
No. I mean, because we're, we're allowed to put in stipulations when we approve something. We can put in certain stipulations. We can't be arbitrary or capricious about it, but we can put in, especially when you have documentation, material evidence in your own subdivision requirements, that this is what's required, you can put that in. So, your motion could be made to approve it contingent upon them adding that, if you wanted to. But we have a motion on the floor right now to reject it. So, until that motion is decided on, and do we want, does, do we want to bring, do we want to call a question then on that?
It would staff approve of approval with the condition of a second ingress egress. Would that be, would you, would that become?
Yeah, that's the only way that staff can make a recommendation of approval, is if it's consistent with the subdivision regulations.
I think that's our answer.
And if you change the subdivision regulations, then we'd be consistent with whatever you change it to.
So, do you want to call a question on rejecting it now?
Sure.
Okay, we have it, we have a question called...
Would you read the motion?
Huh? I will restate the motion, yes. The motion is option to vote to deny the request for the subdivision based upon the requirements of the subdivision rules and regulations in Teloma as they currently stand. Everybody understand that? Okay? All those in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I request a roll call vote.
Roll call vote? You have the right to do that. So, we will make a roll call vote. Are you ready?
Can I ask a question too?
Yeah.
So, if, for example, I would, and this is because I'm new to this, right? So, I have no idea what I'm doing. But if I wanted to say, do what we had said before, to vote in favor of it with a whatever, then I'd be having to vote no now, correct?
Right. If you want to, if we want to turn it around in a minute and vote favorably, we have to reject this one. We have to vote no right now.
Vote no on voting no.
No.
You got it.
We're voting to deny the request. All in favor? That's a, we're voting to deny, so that would be a yes vote.
Yeah, and if you vote no, then you are voting not to deny.
Then you can break it up as your second motion.
Exactly.
To add the other entrance. Then you can break it up as your second motion to add the other entrance.
Correct.
So, roll call. Mr. Blanks?
No.
No.
No?
No.
No?
Aye.
No.
Okay. We have, that's one, two, three, four, five noes and one aye.
Even the person that seconded the motion didn't vote for it.
That's legal.
That's legal.
That's totally legal. Surprising, but.
Okay, so now we can entertain a motion to approve if somebody wishes to make one.
I make a motion that we approve this if they follow our rules.
Contingent upon?
Contingent on putting a second entrance exit at Riley Creek Road.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion in second to approve the subdivision request contingent upon the developer adding a second entrance and egress accessed on Riley Creek Road.
Roll call vote, please.
Does it have to be on Riley Creek Road? Can they, like?
I don't think you have enough, I don't think you have enough courage on the other side to make this.
Okay, okay, I was just bringing.
Yeah, that would be impossible from you. Okay? And I have a call for a roll call vote.
Maybe discuss the motion?
Oh, we may, absolutely.
Well, thank you.
I have a motion in second.
In the amenities, the developer says he will put in sidewalks along each internal street. Says he will put in a five-foot wide sidewalk along a section of Ovoca Road. How much of Ovoca Road will have a sidewalk?
Whatever his entrance is.
So, those children or bicycle riders or walkers who come out of that subdivision on Ovoca Road will have a sidewalk for this long. But then they've got no sidewalk all the way up. It dumps out into no sidewalk.
Sidewalk picks up over there across from Kings Ridge, hasn't it? It has it? There's not one on the right side?
No.
No.
No. It's a problem.
Right side of the sidewalk.
And also with that traffic egressing on Ovoca Road, of course, they would, with this motion, they would have the option to egress on Riley Creek Road. I don't know why they wouldn't, since they wouldn't have to make that awkward stop at Riley Creek Road and make a sharp left turn. I wonder if our planning commission, if our city engineer is here, I wonder if he could give us any insight as to what's going on with that intersection at Riley Creek Road and Ovoca Road? Because that is one of my grave concerns about this entire subdivision here, is that particular, that particular turn there. Could we hear what's planned for that?
I had sent us by Ms. Moody to evaluate, look at the intersection here at the Y of Riley Creek, Ovoca Road. We have evaluated the existing roadway, the existing horizontal curve on Riley Creek Road, put together some options related to the intersection there, and have presented those in for evaluation or consideration of Ms. Moody and the staff. So at this point, we've gone back, we've looked at the T-Doc requirements, we have evaluated the superelevation on Riley Creek Road, what rate, what length of horizontal curve of Riley Creek Road it would be needed to meet the ASHTO and T-Doc requirements. And those have been laid out on a drawing that we have provided. It would take some modifications of Riley Creek Road. It would take, as you think about the pretty sharp curve as a vehicle is coming from the normandy direction into town, comes, approaches the intersection and hits a 200-foot radius, so it's a fairly sharp curve with no superelevation, then that curve has to be widened out, elongated. And that's what we have laid out as an option. It does take some right-of-way acquisition from about four property owners on the inside of the curve to be able to acquire and straighten that right-of-way out. As you may have known, back a number of years ago, I had put together some modifications for Riley, for Ovoca Road at the Y intersection to try and obtain some easement and right-of-way acquisition from the tip of the triangle at that point, from Mr. Brug, correct, Doug Dale, who owned it at the time, I think he still owns it, to be able to pull that Ovoca Road into more of a 90-degree into Riley Creek Road and help sight distance issues there, the vehicle stopping and looking over his right-hand shoulder to see oncoming traffic. And so that had been put together a while back, but we had been asked to give a look at the curve of Riley Creek Road. And so that's what we have done to that.
With the Ovoca Road teeing into Riley Creek Road, how much straight distance do you have before you tee into Riley Creek Road with your current layout? There's a minimum requirement, you know?
Yeah, the, with the proposed layout that we have recently looked at, is that your question?
How much straightaway do you have for that proposed layout?
On, I'm sorry, still, on the Riley Creek Road.
On Ovoca, you'll be making a rather sharp right-hand turn to get on, to tee into Riley Creek Road.
How much, how much straight do you have? Is that what you're asking, right?
That's correct. How much straight do you have on Ovoca Road before you tee into Riley Creek?
I don't have extra copies at this point. So, yeah, the, the right-of-way acquisition on Ovoca Road that we had laid out to get, it was a 15-foot width, but it actually occurred over about 150 feet is what it occurred over. And that, that would enable the widening and the straightening out to 90 to pull Ovoca Road into Riley Creek Road is what that was. And that's a stop condition, that is.
Okay, is that still, I'm sorry, Scott.
That's fine.
I may not have made myself clear, but you've not answered to me, you haven't answered the question. How much straight length do you have on Ovoca Road as you tee into Riley Creek Road? The city has a minimum requirement. Does it meet that minimum requirement?
You have a minimum requirement on a, on a non-stop condition. We have a stop condition of Ovoca Road into Riley Creek Road is what we have. They are coming to a stop. So that distance that we have as far as straight proposed on the plan would be about 75 feet is what is here. That's to the edge of the right-of-way. So to edge of a pavement line of what would be the white line of Riley Creek Road, you would have about 80, 85 feet from what I'm scaling here. And that pulls, I'd be glad to walk up, show you the plan here.
I've seen the plan.
Okay. That's, that's what would pull a straight line into the stop condition.
I've seen the plan. That's what my concern was. It looked awfully short distance of straight line distance there. That's okay.
Okay.
However, I think it should be noted that Scott was pointing out the fact that they're going to be bringing Ovoca Road to a stop.
It already is. It's not new.
Yeah, they're supposed to, you're supposed to.
There is a stop sign there. You have to stop there, your life in your hands if you don't.
Well, we all roll for it. But the difference is you're to be square now, once you stop, maybe it'll be much better.
Is there also going to be a stop on Riley Creek?
No, I do plan to find out if it's warranted. I do not believe it would be.
No, that's the reason for the elongated curve.
Yeah, so the stop sign wouldn't be warranted. But on Riley Creek, what we are looking at is there is some additional right-of-way that we want to acquire to lengthen and straighten out that curve, Scott mentioned that. And so I have our public works director reaching out to those property owners and just investigating at this point if they, if there's a willingness there for us to be able to acquire it. And then Chief Blackwell proposed looking into the cost of solar speed sign, like we have in other locations in the city. Because this time in your packet, we provided some information about accidents in the last few years near that Y intersection. And as you'll see, out of 12 or 13 incidents, all but two were in wet conditions, and I would say almost every incident is related to speed. So, you know, we're very concerned about that. So there's just different options we're looking at.
Does that answer your question, right?
No, but it's okay.
I didn't say that it answered your acceptance.
If I understand you would like to see a longer curve at that tee.
Well, make the curve on Ovoca Road so that you've got straight line distance there of whatever the city's minimum requirement is there, which is a straight line, a certain amount, straight line distance after you make the curve before the stop sign.
Before a stop sign.
Yeah.
Is it not 80 feet, 75?
There isn't a lot of land there.
I'm sorry.
I said, there isn't a lot of land there to work with.
There's not. I mean, again, we are trying to maximize the sight distance. We're trying to maximize the sight distance for that vehicle that's coming to a stop there on Ovoca Road.
How much, how much land is in that point? About acres?
Uh, it's more than that. More than 8,000 square feet.
Yeah, it's probably an acre. It's because we have three lots of over 12,000 plus right-of-way acquisitions, so it's probably close to.
If you could take that, you could fix that. If we could acquire that or?
I don't know how, I think Scott's looked at that and to avoid having a sharp curve. I mean, even with more land, I don't know that you can create a long straight.
The main thing is to bring him to a 90-degree intersection. And that's what we achieved with that option, was to bring him, bring the vehicle to a 90-degree so he has good visibility in both directions.
Well, you can bring, you can bring it to a 90-degree intersection, that right at the, at the 90-degree point of the turn. I mean, so you don't have to have any length to break it, make it 90 degrees. You can.
Which is, which is what we did in 2006, is because we were not looking at trying to elongate the curve of Riley Creek Road, we were just trying to, to get some right-of-way off the tip triangle and bring them into a 90-degree. With this option that we're talking about now on Riley Creek, we're improving the curve of Riley Creek, we're improving the superelevation, and we're even increasing that length that you're talking about, that flat length, straight length, so that it's a much better condition.
Right, my reasoning for, I would rather have two to keep as, you know, we only had the Ovoca entrance, that would be more traffic coming to there, you know? Would we get rid of risk totally? No, but we maybe by 50% reduced it. I know this, this road, you travel it every day, a lot more than I do, and there are, you know, accidents there, and there have been some fatalities there, you know? To keep us legal, if we go to the two entrance entrances, then we don't have to worry about arbitrary, arbitrary and capricious stuff, because we have a statute that we can fall back on. That's why I feel comfortable doing it that way. Is it perfect? No, but it alleviates about 50% of our risk coming off Ovoca, maybe.
Well, quite frankly, if I were living in Woodlands, I don't know why I would ever take Ovoca Road and have to go through that intersection at that stop. I'd certainly take Riley Creek exit and never have to stop.
And they may figure that out, you know?
It won't take long.
But maybe we can both get some of, the developer can get his development done.
Thank you, Scott.
We can get some of what we want done, but we may not get, not everybody's going to get everything.
Call a question. Okay, we have a question called. I'm going to once again state the motion so that everybody's clear. This motion is to approve the Woodlands Phase II preliminary plat as listed from pages four to 10, contingent upon adding a second entrance and egress to the, to the plan coming out on Riley Creek Road. Okay? And you called for a roll call.
Yes, sir, I did.
So, Mr. Comer?
Yes.
Mr. Knowles?
No.
I vote yes.
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 Vote is five to one in favor. The Woodland Hills Phase II major subdivision preliminary plat is approved contingent upon those actions. And thank you all for your patience and help with that. The next public hearing will be that for the May Old Shelbyville Highway Minor Subdivision Final Plat at 251 Old Shelbyville Highway. Do we have the engineer or someone present to speak for this?
We don't, so I will speak.
Okay.
Jennifer Moody, 1400 Wilson Avenue. The applicant knew that he wouldn't be able to attend tonight's meeting, but he did send to my office some copies of things that he wanted to share with you, and I'll just briefly describe them and then bring them up to you. But it looks like he's provided pictures of the property as it is today. He indicated that he has, already has a contract on this piece of property and has put in deed restrictions that require a minimum 2,500 square feet home be built. Maybe some, I think, some of the materials were dictated in that. And he wanted to provide you with a house plan and rendering so you could see that. And then, I believe you've seen this, but just the plat itself.
And the staff recommends. So do we have anyone else who wishes to speak from this, from the public, as this public hearing is open now? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on this subdivision request.
Motion to approve, second.
I have a motion in second to approve this subdivision and as printed on pages 11 through 17. Is there any discussion to come before us? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of item number eight, A2 May Old Shelbyville Highway Minor Subdivision Final Plat, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. And it carries, the motion carries. The next one is item three, Denby Broderick Street Minor Subdivision Final Plat at 200 Broderick Street. Go ahead.
I'm a surveyor on the project of this and it's.
Before you start, I'm going to get it right this time. I'm going to open the public here now, please.
So my name's Andy Best. I don't think I need to state my address again. I'm a land surveyor on this project. It's a rundown house, really, has had a bunch of growth, you know, trees growing through it. Joe Demby bought it, is wanting to tear down the old house, split the existing two and a half lots plus a piece of an alley that was conveyed from the city to the previous owner. We've taken all those and combined them and created three new buildable lots from those portions of lots.
Lee, according to what I read here, the...
Yeah, the chapter's available recommendations.
The lot sizes are adequate for all the setbacks and all the requirements.
Yes, it is. It meets the 2,000 square foot minimum that R2 Zemig District in each lot exceeds that size.
Not anywhere in historical over line, right?
No, sir.
Is there anyone else to come before from the public? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on this request.
I move to approve. Second.
I have a motion and second to approve item number eight, A8A3 Denby Broderick Leona Minor Subdivision Final Plat as printed on pages 18 through 23. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Hearing none, the motion carries and the request is approved. The next one is Parkview Cedar Lane Minor Subdivision Final Plat, 700 William Northern Boulevard. Excuse me, I'll open the public hearing.
It's another one of my projects here. This is on the corner of Cedar Lane and William Northern Boulevard. It's got Jacobs Engineering in behind it. It's Dr. Yes. I didn't know you were part of them, so you were, you're...
There I am.
Okay. So, this is that property there, the Hartons own the property right now, they're wanting to subdivide a portion off the lower end for future development. I was thinking that that, the engineer was going to be here for that project tonight, but they must have gotten postponed.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
So, and I meant to say this a minute ago, some of these new rules, I just want to go on, on the book saying this, some of the new rules that were changed back in June, I feel that they impede development in the city of Tallahoma. And I would be more than willing to sit down and work with the planning commission and give my opinion as a, as a land surveyor in the area as to how this affects me and my clients, so.
Do we have anyone else to speak from the public concerning this subdivision request? Seeing no, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second from Mr. Comer to approve item eight, A4 Parkview Cedar Lane Minor Subdivision Final Plat as printed on pages 24 to 29. Any discussion?
Initially thought that that, both those lots, one and two, were going to have a development on it. Is that not correct?
It is my understanding that the, the interested party decided they didn't want to at this time develop the entire property and are only choosing to develop the subtle again.
So that's why we have a new lot line, correct?
That's correct.
That's new in the last meeting? That's new to us, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
So splitting it into three, that's supposed to do now.
Well, they, the, you see, before they just had this one and that development was going to take that whole thing. Now they, they've changed their mind or whatever. So...
Any other discussion? Hearing none, then I'll call a question. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this is, this is after the fact. It's not relevant, but it, it is relevant. There's a, there's a request for variance posted on that property there.
The applicant requested, the application report.
Oh, that's what the variance was, okay.
Yeah.
Well, it, okay. So that's the...
Okay, so then we move to zoning text amendment.
Did you hear a vote on that?
Yes.
Yes.
It was approved. Zoning text amendment from Franklin County on zoning resolution article four, section 17, provisions for proposed towers and for section 17.9 for space on, what is it, Tower Falls or something, Tower Fall radius. Then as presented on pages 30 through 33. Do we have anyone from the public? I'll open the public hearing. Do we have anyone from the public to speak to this? Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
In this case, it's a motion to send a rec, a favorable recommendation.
Excuse me, I move that favorable recommendation is sent back to Franklin County zoning resolutions.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send a favorable recommendation back to the Franklin County Zoning Commission concerning their resolution article four, section 17, and section 17.9 as listed in pages 30 through 33. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, educate me. Why, why does, why do we, why does this come to us, Tallahoma?
Because we're a regional land commission.
Okay. Because we are a regional land commission.
How far does our region go?
To the watershed or, in some cases, but it, it ties to the county because the county is part of our...
I realize that part of Tallahoma is in Coffee County, but seriously, how far does our region encompass? I guess there's a map somewhere that tells us that.
It goes down to Cook Road.
It can, it can be based on many different things. I know the county size themselves, the, the, if we have a UGB area or in some cases, they even told us, as I, as I stated, a watershed, if it, if it's something that might affect a watershed.
Well, that's what might be, but what for Tallahoma, a regional land commission? What does it encompass? Is there a map, Lee?
There is.
There's a map and a comprehensive development plan. There's the map and it shows the urban growth boundaries, the one in Coffee County, the one in Franklin County. And what they've done is they've designated those areas as planning areas so, since I guess about like 2000, since, so their zoning regulations are, are, has jurisdiction in that area, even though our subdivision regulations, you know, we do the subdivisions and urban growth bounty, they do the zoning. But if they change any of the zoning, then they got to get a recommendation from this planning commission along with their own planning commission before it goes to the county commissioners for approval.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Often do we see that, though?
We see it kind of regular from Franklin County, at least once a year.
I would think that would happen often if we're approving anything.
Not so much from Coffee County.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question that's probably due to the fact that we've got a partial document here rather than a complete document. But this first change that they made refers to a principal structure and an accessory structure. And my question is, does this second part of this apply to a, a principal structure or an accessory structure or both?
I think what it's saying is that an antenna or a tower can be either a principal structure or accessory structure, depending on what else is developed on the lot.
So this second part then applies to both?
Right. This is just basically, I guess going over the follow... So is it, are you talking about the 7.16 or 7.9?
7.16, Lee.
17.16.
Yeah, what it's doing is it's giving it like a definition for it, saying that if a tower is on a, by itself on an unapproved lot, that it's the principal structure. If it's on a lot with another structure like a, you know, a commercial building or something of that nature, then it would be construed as the accessory structure on the lot, not the principal.
Well, the reason I ask that is, see, that first one is a change, it's not an existing statement. And it's a change, and then you've got two parts to the change and the other's a change. It just kind of begs the question to me if it applies to, well, why did they designate those two differently unless they were going to make some distinction below? I don't know.
I think they're just, the way they're trying to do is classify the, the lot. If it's, the tower's the only thing on the lot, then the land use will be a communication tower. If the communication's on the same, tower's on the same lot, then say for instance, a warehouse.
Yeah.
Then they're going to say it's a warehouse and it has accessory use of a, of a tower. It's the only thing. Yeah, that's a, yeah, that was just being, being brand new when there's 17.16. The other one is the existing language is being pulled in 17.9, the proposed language is really its place.
Well, I've got no real problem with it, but I just don't understand how the two changes fit together.
Number 17, 17.16 is new. They're adding that to it.
I understand that.
So that's just, they've just added that. Now, they've revised 17.9. So they revised, I think you're looking in a different order. 17.9's been there for a while, they're revising it.
I know.
Okay, so this is just a brand new statement, 17.16.
Yeah, and are they related or are they unrelated?
I'd say they're unrelated. I mean...
It's just one, it's one text amendment, they're doing two changes with it.
It's, it's not important, but it's just confusing. And I think if we had the whole document, the answer would probably be obvious. I think it comes from the fact that you got a partial document.
And Ray, if you look, if you'll look on page 31 at the TCA, that'll explain why we're having to look at this.
Okay.
Again, because it talks about, they can't do that without submitting to us.
Yeah, without...
Okay, a motion and a second to approve the text amendments as presented from page 32, what did I say, 33?
33.
33 in our document. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Hearing none, that passes. Next thing up is a site plan, and this will not be a public hearing, a site plan for a city police station at 213 West Grunty Street. As presented on pages 34 through...
41.
41.
Motion to approve site plan for the new police station.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the site plan for the new police station as presented on pages 33 through 41. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Hearing none, the request is approved. Any other business to come before us?
Mr. Chairman, I have...
It's time for elections.
I have one comment.
Yes.
At our planning meeting, work session, I guess it was, week ago, I made the comment that these drawings that showed the division of properties were hard to follow and hard to understand. I'd like to thank the staff to make it much easier to, to understand this.
I have to agree, they were much better this time. The lines drawn, much better, easier to understand.
Good.
For the subdivisions, yes.
Since we're, since we're making...
We appreciate that very much.
Since we're making comments, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Pages 38 and 39, I want you to save the paper. Who could read, who could read anything after? We've got it on computer. I know, you know, we can look at it on a computer and maybe we can...
Your laptop, you can blow it up. And then you say, "Three."
You cracker.
I can actually read it fine.
Well, your eyes are younger than mine.
You can do it on an iPad, too.
Yeah, I hate to hear an eye doctor say that he can't read good. I can't, I mean, I'm a good old...
At this point, this chairman pro temp relinquished the gavel to the chair...
Actually, no, you're still a pro temp, you can stay on this.
Uh, no, no, I can't.
You're, you're in, you're going to be late.
No, no, no.
For you, for those of you that came in late, I made us postpone this election with the help of the rest of the board so we could have, you know, we could have, we could have voted them in absentia, I guess, but I just think, you know, if we're going to have an election of officers or deal with things, we're planning it closed, it's important that we're all here. So I made them postpone the election because I thought somebody got a little bit, so, and you did.
Totally had it on the calendar for five.
Lee, if the chairman pro temp relinquishes the gavel, you have to take it.
I think that probably is it's...
You have to. As chairman, I have the right to relinquish the gavel. Now take this thing and...
You may get it back.
Because we're doing the election for officers right now. Can I get a nomination for chair?
I move that Larry Crabtree, chairman.
Could I get a second?
Second.
No other nominations, do we already get a motion to approve? I get kind of lost here when I stop there.
You have a motion and second for my nomination, but that's it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You're your chair.
Okay, you all, I'll warn you, you put me in this shit, so... Okay, so now acting as chair, I will entertain a nomination for vice chair. And hearing nobody else, I will nominate Chad to be vice chair.
I'll second.
Paul.
I have a nomination and second for Chad to be vice chair. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
You didn't give me a chance to say no.
Congratulations.
We'll double your salary.
Okay, that being concluded, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn the City of Tallahoma Planning Commission. Don't get excited, we're not done yet. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
You didn't give me a chance to say no.
Congratulations.
We'll double your salary.
Okay, that being concluded, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn the City of Tallahoma Planning Commission. Don't get excited, we're not done yet. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The Tallahoma Planning Commission is adjourned and...
Oh, that's right.
We will open the meeting for the Board of Zonings.
There's no zoning.
You don't have any?
There are no items. I was like, oh, that's right.
Yeah, why'd you put them down here?
There's just 10 on the next meeting.
Which is at 4:30. It was a slide. It's nice.